On civilians to consider foster or adoptive parenting. Among them seventeen-year veteran LAPD Officer Julie Munson and her husband Detective Victor McDowell, who adopted a baby boy after a miscarriage. Their son is now nine years old.
Our journey was so long, it was, you know, two, three years of that moment. But, um, when you get that phone call, um, you know, Julie, I think I found your baby. It just...
Officials from the Department of Children and Family Services say nearly 10,000 calls come in a month reporting neglected or abused children, and currently 500 children are waiting for adoptive parents.
Sometimes if we do have to remove the children, they can be placed with relatives, but every day we have children that we remove that we need to find a temporary foster home for them.
And among those who say their foster families changed their lives are LAPD Officer DeAndre James and twenty-year-old Tawanisha Burgess.
I was still able to be a productive citizen through foster care and I made it. So, um, if you guys are thinking about adopting, I think that's, it's perfect.
I knew that I wanted the family, I just didn't know when was it gonna happen or anything like that, like, you know, and for me, they changed my life.
Officials from LA County's Department of Children and Family Services say adopting through their agency won't cost you money. All it takes is a little tender love and care. In downtown LA, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
For more information on how to become a foster or adoptive parent, you can call the LA County Department of Children and Family Services at 1-888-811-1121, or log on to shareyourheartla.org. It's a tale of two families in South LA, one grateful that two murder suspects are finally behind bars, the other hopes reward money will flush out the driver who bolted from the scene of a deadly accident. Gil Reyes reports.
The family of sixty-two-year-old Maria Rivas reacts following the arrests of her two accused killers.
We just wanna thank, uh, the whole LAPD department, the detectives, everyone that was involved, and, uh, and all the support of everybody that came forth and, uh, showed us love. Thank you.
Police say Rivas was carrying groceries when she was attacked from behind and stabbed to death on the street. The suspects made off with her purse. This happened near Adams Boulevard and Catalina Avenue in December. Last month, tips led police to the suspects, eighteen-year-old Kenyatta and Keyshawn Blake, twin brothers who police say may be linked to a series of robberies and assaults in South LA. Anyone with additional information should call police. Some three miles south of the Rivas killing, another horrible crime took place. This one, a deadly hit-and-run accident here on Slosson and Danker Avenues during the early morning hours of Sunday, January 4th. Killed in the crash, thirty-nine-year-old Triva Arnold, a mother of two. Witnesses say her killer may have been driving a silver or tan Honda Toyota or Volkswagen. The family hopes a $50,000 reward will lead to the driver.
There are others in danger of this person as long as they stay on the street. Another family may feel the pain that we feel, and it needs to stop.
So this is our third, uh, hit-and-run case in the last thirteen months where a, uh, person is deceased.
Those numbers just in Councilman Bernard Parks's South LA District. The city of LA as a whole experienced twenty-seven hit-and-run-related deaths last year. Twenty-seven deaths, too many. In South LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The city is offering a $50,000 reward in the Triva Arnold hit-and-run case. Anyone with information should contact South Traffic Division Officers at 323-421-2500. The head of LA's airports announces her departure. A city employee is recognized for using common sense solutions to save taxpayer dollars. And a university changes its mind about cutting a path through a local park and in turn donates a big sum of money. These stories in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti presented the second Mayor's Civic Innovation Award to Bureau of Engineering Surveyor John Tosto for finding a new way to do his job that saves time and taxpayer money. Tosto used a smartphone, the Google Earth app, and a bicycle to mark mile intervals and main entrance markers along a seven-mile stretch of the LA River Bike Path. Previously, this would have required a three-person crew working on the ground for two weeks, but Tosto was able to do the job himself in just two days. The city's Bureau of Engineering Survey Division is now adopting Tosto's system to digitally map locations during street projects. The Mayor's Civic Innovation Award is given to LA City employees who develop creative and common sense solutions to everyday problems. Gina Marie Lindsay, who for eight years has led the city agency that operates Los Angeles International Airport, has announced that she plans to retire. Lindsay has been the executive director of Los Angeles World Airports since June 4th, 2007. Lindsay said in a statement, "This is an appropriate time for a transition." LAX is currently undergoing a major multi-phase renovation. Mayor Eric Garcetti praised Lindsay, saying Lindsay is "one of the nation's finest aviation executives," and that's why LAX is now on its way to becoming one of the world's best airports. USC joined residents in Boyle Heights for a $1 million check presentation recently at Hazard Park. After the councilmen representing Boyle Heights negotiated with USC to abandon plans to build a street through Hazard Park as part of their plan to expand the USC Health Sciences Medical Campus, the university turned around and committed more than $1 million to the community in park improvements. The work will include a new jogging path and a new toddler playground. Part of the donation will also include money to support youth sports programming. Struggling authors can use a new platform at the LA City Library to help them get discovered and sell their work. But as Gil Reyes reports, the pages on their books won't be made of paper.
Aspiring writers, take note.
It's an exciting time to be an author, and it's an exciting time to independently publish. There's a lot of information out there for you if you want to go down this road and see...
Indie author Maggie Marr, known for steamy romance novels like her Hollywood Girl's Club series of books, isn't talking fiction. She's at LA Central Library's Mark Taper Forum, telling writers who were unpublished to DIY, or do-it-yourself, on Indie Author Day, a day to introduce what's called the SelfE platform. It helps writers find readers.
Really using the public library as a platform to have their books be discoverable.
Here's how it works. Aspiring writers submit their works for review to the Library Journal. That's a trade publication for librarians. If accepted, the journal curates and promotes their work, sharing it with public libraries nationwide, but not in traditional book form with pages, digital form, so library members can borrow and read your works on eBooks, tablets, and smartphones.
And then our software allows for multiple patrons at the same time. Um, as many patrons, the books can go viral.
You could gain a following online, where fans can purchase your book and any future works. SelfE is a free, non-binding marketing service. And even if the Library Journal rejects your book, it could still be placed in digital format at local libraries in your community.
And we have so many talented budding authors here in this community, this is giving them the tool to have their, their books, their dreams, their stories surfaced all across this country, and certainly right here in LA.
The creative capital of the world. At LA Central Library in downtown, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Here's more on how you can submit your book to the Library Journal for review. Simply log on to lapl.org and hit the SelfE icon. She's been battered and bruised for years, but now Florence Nightingale shines bright once again. Yana K explains.
Three, two, one.
With her unveiling the newly restored statue of Florence Nightingale, an iconic figure in the nursing profession, returns to her former graceful glory in the same spot she has stood since 1937.
It's a really significant emotional moment, and for the profession of nursing, it means so much.
City officials and community members gathered to witness the unveiling at Lincoln Park. Florence Nightingale was a celebrated social activist and laid the foundation for professional nursing. Many former and current nurses say Florence Nightingale set the standards that the profession continues to follow and improve upon today. They say the newly restored statue will serve her memory well.
Because she's in a perfect setting, and she should stay there as a beautiful woman in a beautiful spot.
Over the years, the statue's hands and the oil lamp she held were severely damaged. It also suffered from hairline fractures, vandalism, and graffiti. So the Department of Recreation and Parks, Cultural Affairs, Councilman Gil Sadio, and the community came together to get it restored.
This particular sculpture acknowledges, recognizes, and helps tell the story of the role, the really important role that nurses play in, in the human condition.
The massive restoration included an intense chemical peel. New molds were also created for her hands, which were structurally reinforced. A wall surrounding the nine-foot stone statue was also built. And to protect her from the elements, the statue has been waterproofed and has been covered with a special coating that makes it easier to remove graffiti without causing any damage.
We're reclaiming the park. It's one of a half a dozen things that we're doing to transform this park and make it open and accessible to the entire public.
And officials hope this newly restored Florence Nightingale will be the main attraction. I'm Yana K for LA This Week.
City officials also took the opportunity to add new landscaping, including water-tolerant plants and roses. In this week's List of Things to Do, the Hollyhock House reopens. Kids learn the art and craft of movie trailer editing. And date night, how about a play on Valentine's Day? Walk Right In, as in Frank Lloyd Wright. The famed Hollyhock House, designed by the iconic architect, has been closed for restoration work. But on Friday, February 13th, it will reopen for free self-guided tours. For one night only, 24 hours to be exact, the public will be invited to visit from 4:00 PM on Friday, the 13th, to 4:00 PM on Saturday, the 14th. The admission fee will be waived until 11:00 AM Saturday. Visitors are invited to share their photos via social media with the hashtag #WrightAtNight. After its reopening, the Hollyhock House will resume regular operating hours from Thursdays through Sundays for an admission fee. The National Historic Landmark is located at Barnstall Art Park at 4800 Hollywood Boulevard. Go to barnstall.org for details. And when was the last time you went to the theater? On Valentine's Day, take your date to East West Players Fars washer dryer at the David Henry Wang Theater in Little Tokyo at 120 Judge John Isos Street. Why is Sonia so hesitant to introduce her new husband, Michael, to the people in her building? Why does the doorman keep calling her about a package in the lobby? Tempers and misunderstanding flare and mayhem ensues as the arrival of Michael's mother, some nosey neighbors, and Sonia's best friend force Michael and Sonia to reevaluate their relationship. The two-hour play starts at 8:00 PM. Go to eastwestplayers.org. Kids ages 10 through 14 are in for a treat as the Hammer Museum hosts Long Story Short: The Art of Editing Movie Trailers on Sunday, February 15th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Students venture inside the art and craft of movie trailer editing, exploring the concept of summarizing a two-hour movie in a matter of minutes. The instructor, John Lefkovich, is an award-winning filmmaker and editor in film and television advertising. The class is being offered for free in collaboration with 826LA. Reservations are encouraged, as there is a waiting list already. The Hammer Museum is located at 10899 Wilshire Boulevard. Go to workshops.826la.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. When it comes to some of the city's best cycling routes, the Valley may not immediately come to mind, but that could all be changing. This was no race, but a relaxing day of bike riding in the west San Fernando Valley.
Went to this last year, it was a lot of fun. Had a good turnout.
This was the second annual Blumenfield Community Bike Ride that took cyclists on an eight-mile ride from Councilman Bob Blumenfield's field office at Van Owen Street in Reseda, along the Los Angeles River, and back down along the Orange Line Route on Victory Boulevard.
It's a chance to bring together a coalition of folks to, uh, take a nice, fun bike ride through the third council district, uh, and see different elements of the district together.
For Garrett Hennessy, events like this give him and his kids a chance to bond.
Just wanted to bring the kids out for a nice bike ride, uh, with the community and, and spend some time with the family.
The ride also promotes health and fitness and community pride.
I'm in a fitness program. I just lost a hundred pounds, so this is how I'm gonna stay in shape. Just have fun, and ride around in our community here in Reseda and all over.
In fact, the Valley may just be the next nexus of new public transportation projects and pedestrian bikeways. Councilman Blumenfield recently joined LA Department of Transportation officials to host a town hall meeting to highlight what the Mayor's Great Streets Program has in store for the Valley's public spaces, as well as to hear from residents on their transit priorities and ideas.
I'm a strong supporter of alternative modes of transportation, and, uh, like to use the bike whenever I can, and, and also the metro, and encourage other people to do so as well.
With the next car-free block party, better known as Seaglavia, coming to the Valley in March for the first time in the event's four-year history, residents are eager to show off to their neighbors in the south just what their neighborhoods have to offer. The next Seaglavia in the Valley takes place Sunday, March 22nd, in the communities of North Hollywood and Studio City. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook, and our Twitter handle is @latw35. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Sergeants call the members, have them report to the council chambers. Sergeants call the members. Good morning. It is Friday, the 13th. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets, shh, this council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, Buscaino, Sadio, England, and Fuentes, Wezar, Carrasco, Crayla, Bons, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Wesson, 10 members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Uh, Wezar moves. Ofero seconds?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bloomingfield moves. Buscaino seconds.
Mr. President, there is a recommendation to continue item one to March 17. Again, item one to March 17.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. That brings us where?
Items two through five, they're items noticed for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety recommends that the lien amount for item four be reduced to three thousand, three, excuse me, $3,636.14 to reflect the partial payment and that item five be received and filed in as much as the subject property was determined to be a single-family dwelling and thus exempt from lien processing.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be, Mr., Mr. Fuentes?
Item two, if we can continue that for two weeks?
Okay, item two, for two weeks, that would bring us where, uh, Mr. Clerk?
That brings us to February 27, sir. Again, February 27.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order? And so now, do we have, uh, do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on, uh, items two and three.
Okay, so we've continued two, so we'll hold three?
Yes, sir.
Anything available to vote on?
Uh, four and five, sir.
Then let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
10 eyes.
That brings us where?
That brings us to items six through 14. They're items which public hearings have been held. A committee report for item six has been circulated.
Okay, specials, Mr. Bloomingfield?
Uh, item 13 special, please.
Okay, if we could hold item 13 for Mr. Bloomingfield. Any others? Mr. Labons?
I request that this be sent to committee, so it can be scheduled in committee. Item 14, it was waived, I want to send it to committee.
Okay, let's, uh, without objection, oh wait, no, it looks like, why don't we?
14.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
You're okay? So without objection, we will send item 14 to committee? Let's prepare to vote on what's, Mr. Clerk?
Excuse me, uh, Councilmember Labons? For item 14, which committee did you wish to send that to?
Plum. Plum.
Very good, sir.
That's all, thank you.
Let's vote on what's left, uh, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
11 eyes.
That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
That brings us, uh, to item 15. It's an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is before this body? Do we have cards?
Uh, yes, sir, we do. We have cards on item 15.
Okay, uh, continue.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations.
Mr. Labons, uh, if I could have you in the chair, I have a, I have a puppy, I have a dog to try to sell.
Call on the President of City Council, Mr. Herb Wesson. Mr. President, please proceed.
Wait here, I want you to introduce yourself and explain what we're doing at the shelter. Go on, don't be shy.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Fields. I'm from the West LA Animal Care and Control, and all six of our city shelters this weekend are having discount adoptions for Valentine's Day, and this is Blossom.
Blossom is, uh, in between a year and a half and two years old. Uh, Blossom is ready to go, she has her shots, and she's a deer. As you can see, she's very friendly. I guess she's a, a dachshund mix, or what we would call back in the day, a semi-wiener dog, and she's looking for, uh, a home. A very, a very polite young lady. We have a 100% adoption rate in the city of Los Angeles. We want to keep it alive, we want to keep it going strong, so please, when you adopt one of our animals, you're really saving a life. Uh, if you have an interest in Blossom, call 888-452-7381. Uh, again, members, we're going to keep Blossom around for a little while, until hopefully she gets adopted, so if anyone in the building would like to look at her, she'll be down with us in the council floor. If someone wants to call in and have us hold her, so that they can, uh, come check her out, we'll do that as well. If you need to send a, uh, a picture of her to your spouse, or significant other, or your mom and dad, uh, feel free to come take a picture, because today, we are going to try our very best to find Blossom a home. So, uh, maybe you can kind of show her around, show her, oh, you are a sweetie. Anyway, uh, Mr. President, members?
We got a special member, Mr. Bloomingfield, for the 13th district, I think he has an idea.
Okay.
Well, not an idea, a, I, a related announcement, because this is great, that Blossom is adorable, and I urge everyone to adopt Blossom, but given that a lot of pet lovers are watching us right now, I wanted to also let people know, in conjunction with the City Department of Animal Services, tomorrow on Valentine's Day, in my office, we are doing a Valentine's Day Pet Fair, where we're going to have a whole number of animals from the shelter coming to my office in Municipal Building, on Van Owen and Van Alden, in Reseda, and we're going to have free adoptions. Any, any adopted dog will get free grooming. We also have, uh, chipping, and vaccinations, and, uh, all sorts of discounts, so it's going to be a great pet event. This is a great way to kick it off. Blossom gets adopted today, and then tomorrow, for anybody who misses out on the opportunity for Blossom, come to my office for a great opportunity to adopt other pets, or if you have pets, to get services at a, a major discount certain price.
Well, thank you so very much, Mr. Bloomingfield. Again, folks, we have Blossom. 888-452-73, is that, uh, 81? 7381. So anyway, we're going to keep her here for a while. Thank you for your time, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Ofero, we have a special presentation for the great councilman of the 13th district, with Ms. Martinez.
Good morning, colleagues. Today, Ms. Martinez and I, uh, recognize the American Heart Association and the Go for, uh, Go Red for Women campaign for their advocacy to bring awareness, and for helping build healthier lives for all Americans, free of cardiovascular diseases and strokes. Joined, uh, joining us today is Laura Baker, Business Development Director for the American Heart Association, and our very special guest, Crystal Flores, who is going to be speaking in just a moment. Heart disease is the leading cause of death for men and women in the United States. Every year, one in four deaths are caused by heart disease. Since 1984, more women than men have died each year from this disease and stroke. Heart disease is the number-one killer of women, causing one in three, one in three deaths each year. In 2004, these statistics prompted the American Heart Association to launch the Go Red for Women campaign, in celebration of National Wear Red Day, which challenges all Americans to wear red on February 6th, to take a stand for this cause. Go Red for Women is the American Heart Association's national call to increase awareness of heart disease, and to inspire women to take charge of their heart health. Through research and education to healthy lifestyle changes, tremendous strides have been made in combating this disease. Here are just a few of the successful statistics. Nearly 90% of women have made at least one health behavioral change. More than 50% have increased their exercise rate. Six out of 10 women have changed their diets. More than 40% of women have checked their cholesterol levels. One-third now talk with their doctors about developing heart health plans. Today, nearly 300 fewer women die from heart disease and stroke each day in the United States, resulting in more, a more than 30% death reduction over the past 10 years. And at this juncture, I would like to, uh, recognize and introduce and welcome, uh, our woman on the Los Angeles City Council, Ms. Nuri Martinez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ofero. Talking about the leading cause of death among women, which is heart disease. For too long, heart disease has been seen as an issue mainly affecting men. Historically, all the research that has been done has been focused on men and not women. So all treatments and programs are geared towards men, unfortunately. So it's no surprise that women didn't recognize the risk and the symptoms of this disease, which has only hurt women nationwide. Today, only half of all women realize that heart disease is the number-one killer, and less than half know what are considered to be health risks, and things that they can do to control their cholesterol, pressure, and other symptoms. As a result, the Go Red for Women campaign was launched in 2003, to help dispel the notion that heart disease was a man's issue. Today, the Go Red program is thriving, and the Go Red Heart Checkup has engaged more than 2 million women to learn more about the risk of heart disease. More than 200,000 healthcare providers' offices have received critical patient information on women and heart disease. Of the women who have participated in a, in the Go Red Campaign for Women education program, nearly 90% have made at least one healthy behavior change. More than one-third of the women have lost weight. Six out of 10 women have changed their diets, and more than 40% of women have checked their cholesterol. Join us here to continue the fight to raise awareness and change more lives together. Thank you very much.
The American Heart Association has a commitment to improving cardiovascular health of all Americans by 20%, and reducing deaths from cardiovascular diseases and strokes by 20%, all by the year 2020. The American Heart Association needs our support in achieving this goal, and I'd like to invite Laura Baker from the American Heart Association, uh, to say a few words about that goal. Ms. Baker?
Thank you so much, and I'd like to, on behalf of the American Heart Association, thank this council for this, um, honor and recognition. And as we've mentioned, heart disease is the number-one killer of Americans, taking more lives than all forms of cancer combined. But what I think is important to note is that 80% of heart disease and stroke is preventable, and it's preventable with lifestyle changes. And to that note, I would like to make a special thank you to this chamber for your, um, support of including e-cigarette in your smoke-free laws, as that is just one example of a way that we are influencing and encouraging our community to live that healthy lifestyle that will be preventing, um, heart disease. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. As I mentioned earlier, we have a very, very special guest with us this morning, Ms. Crystal Flores. Crystal is a congenital heart disease survivor. At just 28 years old, she's undergone eight open-heart surgeries. Crystal is a hero, and her story is one of remarkable courage, determination, and hope. Not expected to live to adulthood, Crystal has defied all the odds, and thanks to medical breakthroughs, is here and dedicating her life to giving hope to others. Saving lives through advocacy and fundraising, and reminding all of us how precious our hearts and our lives are. She is excited to share her story, as well as encourage us all to take care of our hearts, to keep them healthy. Please, everyone, give a warm round of applause for Crystal Flores.
Good morning, uh, uh, City Council. Um, I, first of all, I'd like to start off by thanking everybody for allowing me the opportunity to share my story, and also, I want to thank you for, um, recognizing, uh, you know, February as Heart Month, and, um, you know, to raise awareness. Um, I would like to share a little bit about my story with you all. I was born with heart disease. I've had eight open-heart surgeries. My first surgery, I was six months old, and, um, after that, I had many complications. I've survived two cardiac arrests, but luckily, thanks to medical breakthrough, and thanks to the American Heart Association, that they're so devoted, uh, to fund heart disease research, and to educate people about awareness, I've been able to survive, and the research has prolonged my life and has changed the course of my disease. You know, the doctors, when I was younger, they told me I wasn't going to make it into my adult years, but, you know, I didn't believe that. I had a faith, and I just, I just tried to be positive as much as I could, and now I'm here today. I want to share a fond memory of mine, when I was seven, I asked my mother, "Mom, I want to know what I have in my heart." And so she handed me a paper where my heart doctor wrote down all my heart defects, and I looked at the paper, but of course, at seven years old, I'm not going to understand the terms that's on the paper, but there was a certain symbol on that paper that spoke to me, and that was the symbol of the American Heart Association. And when I saw this symbol, it gave me a lot of hope, and I knew that that symbol meant that there were people out there fighting for me, and fighting for people that have heart disease, and on behalf of the American Heart Association, you know, it means a lot to me that you all are recognizing February as Heart Month, and are supporting us, supporting our Go Red for Women campaign. That means a lot to me personally, and, you know, I just want to say, 80% of heart disease can be preventable, but it's up to you. In my case, I don't have a choice, I have to live with this disease every day, but everyone in this room has a choice to take care of your health and be heart healthy. Thank you for having me here.
Colleagues, on the eve of Valentine's Day, can you, can you even imagine a better reminder and a better symbol of Valentine's Day and heart health than Crystal Flores? Please, another round of applause. Now, therefore, we recognize February as Go Red for Women, uh, Month, um, and February 2015 as American Heart Month in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martinez, and Mr. Ofero, and our friends from the Heart Association. And now I'd like to call item number three, please. Mr. Clerk?
Item three called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, for identification purposes only, honorary chairman of NOON Charter Amendments 1 and 2. Number three, hearing protest, appeals, or objection to Building and Safety Report, confirmation of lien. Uh, this was continued from, uh, January 14th. This is, incidentally, almost all these liens are against minorities, and are in minority areas. Pretty much any white landlord, uh, you know what denomination they belong to, uh, west of, of, uh, La Brea, they don't have to pay liens. This one is on South Avalon Boulevard, 10726. The lien is for 4... The lien is for $4,057.69, I'm sure, for nuisance abatement. Wouldn't it be nice if you could charge me? I'm a nuisance. Well, how come you can't abate me? HollywoodHighlands.org.
Wayne Spindler?
First off, remember, adopt a dog. And to all the dogs out there...
Speak to the issue.
Well, they're just trying to help dogs. Dogs are important. Okay, getting to this issue here, again, earlier in the month of February, Black History Month, I called for everyone to join hands and give an exemption for all liens for the month of February because people are being charged double. They are paying the lien, they get a receipt. Years later, they refi their houses, and they go, "Why the hell do I have a $7,000 lien on my house?" The answer is, is because when you pay the lien, you also have to get a satisfaction of lien from the city of Los Angeles. That has to be recorded in the county recorder's office. If you don't do that, when you refi or you sell your house, you have to pay the original lien and the interest, or you don't get your refi or your sale. So, come on, this city has to know that. People come here, and they show they paid the thing 15 years ago. So stop enforcement of all liens and look to see how many people have paid and not had their satisfaction recorded. It costs about $25 to record it. Here, we have $4,057.69. Let's just flip a coin. Heads: zero. Tails: zero. It should be zero. It's heads. So knock this lien out in the month of February. Amnesty and emancipation of all of these illegal liens. Free the homeowners. Free them now.
Mr. Herman?
Speaker, this time, Ricardo Benes Jack.
In the interest of public safety, I know you as Mr. Herman. Jack Herman, please speak.
Brown egg violation there, sir. Thank you. When it comes to the state law regarding housing discrimination, I am in order to say that there needs to be a full exemption of all these liens. Lien 1, item 1, item 2, item 3, item 4, and item 5. I am protesting on behalf of those who cannot be here to represent themselves on the vicious cycle of illegal process of liens conducted by the city of Los Angeles to extort you for certain amount of dollars that they forgot to recover taxes on, or better, as brought out by the speaker before me, those were very serious points of argument, Mr. City Attorney. But you wouldn't care because African-Americans are the main people housed, discriminated by liens because of their color and nature of being African-American, in good terms, black. And then there are people who are discriminated on the basis by your illegal process of liens, by you individuals, by you, Mr. Weezer, who's running for reelection, and Mr. Kocorian. In your districts, you continue this process... Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. CD 8, Mr. Parks. So I say to you, I mean, you are contemptuous, scornful liars when it comes to delegating on behalf of your constituents. Those of you here who did not get the legal process by certified mail to be here to represent yourselves. So I am calling on this administrative body that are listening. Sorry, Mr. Engler, you're not here in your seat, but take action to hold all these liens until due process is heard by the recipients. Thank you.
There's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 13, called Special by Councilmember Blumentfeld.
For note this here, I have a number 6 here. Item 6, is that under...
Mr. President, that item's been approved.
Been approved. Thank you. Note the card for Mr. Walsh. Thank you. All right, Mr. Blumentfeld, thank you.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to say a few words about item 13. Mr. President, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this motion, which I co-authored with my colleague, Mr. Sadio. He unfortunately couldn't be here today, but I wanted to thank him for moving it quickly through the Housing Committee. This has to do with the PACE program, and you've heard me talk about the PACE program before. Last year, I had a bill dealing with PACE specifically on energy and water conservation. It's an issue I was very involved with on the state level. Basically, what it is, the PACE program allows you to finance certain upgrades through your property tax. And in this case, the idea of this is to extend the PACE program to seismic retrofits. This will make it much more attainable for people to do those seismic retrofits, which we are going to be encouraging and requiring to do throughout the city of Los Angeles in a way that will not bust somebody's budget, a way that will allow them to do it vis-à-vis their property tax. And if it's done in such a way, it can be combined with the energy and water, PACE issues, and really create a synergy that can be very beneficial to Angelinos. So with that, I wanted to thank the committee for moving it through and ask for an aye vote here in council. Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work, Mr. Blumentfeld. In direction, let's see no speakers on the queue. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
12 ayes. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 15, called Special for Cards.
Jack Herman?
Thank you for the clarity of the pronunciation, Mr. Jack. Although the time is running, it's fine, folks. I got plenty of time. When it comes to rent escrow, it's just the most opportune time for all you to understand that your rights are protected by REAP in as much, in as much as that we can live in a clean, safe environment, great quality of life because of the situation by our leaders to create and adopt the resolutions for investments with our housing. Now, if you have a bad landlord, such as Mr. Kocorian, who puts liens on your property, you would be offended, right? But because this type of landlord, like Mr. Kocorian, on items of the agenda here, I say to you that at 1-846 West Cordova Street, the assessor ID number 5... I'm not going to go into all that. There's a whole list. You can look it up online. The bottom line is this: We have a good program that protects your rights as a renter. Mr. Labange will love you to go rent in his neighborhood. I would suggest and recommend it highly because there are no varmints, roaches, and the birds die because they eat a lot of garbage out there. But under the programs, as I continue, let me see here, wow, this is a lengthy page here on the adoption of as much recommendations for... Oh, rent escrow. I'm staying on the topic, Dionne. I'm on topic now. So in conclusion, and furthermore, notice regarding housing and liens and rent escrow, I say, vote No on Amendment 1, vote No on Amendment 2. You have eroding right in California. Thank you.
Wayne Spindler?
Adopt a dog. Congratulations, all of these property owners. You have been freed, especially, and this is good for the reelection of Weezer. He's released...
Hey, 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 you got us talking about the issue, okay? Thank you.
He should be re-elected. That's all I'm saying. CD 14, 4125, North Van Horn Avenue, is being released. Now, you look at Mr. Sedillo's district. How the hell do you have two different case numbers in the REAP program for one property? What's the poor guy supposed to do? Fix all the plumbing? Replace the boiler? Replace the roof? Now, another guy comes around and says, you know, "Give me back..." "Meet you in the alley. Give me a payoff," you know. No, and this honest homeowner, this honest property owner, would not do that. And he has to get two case numbers, twice, raped in the REAP program? And the only thing that happens with this is that the tenants pay for it, because what happens is, is that the tenants know they need to pay and fix whatever they can in their apartments, because if they start going into the pockets of the landlord, the landlord will raise the rent, raise anything he can. So this program, again, just like item 1 and the rest of the... It should be terminated. The city should get out of this business, leave tenants and landlords to do their disputes in a mediation program. It would be far less money and far less taxing to the taxpayer than doing this complication. Thank you.
Mr. Walsh. John Walsh.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, for identification purposes only, Chairman of No On Charter Amendment 1 and 2.
No, look, we're not going to...
Next resolution?
Mr. Walsh, you are not on topic. This is your last warning. You guys are getting queued... Oh, and you know what, Mr. Walsh? Stay on the tide. One word off topic.
I'm telling you right now, look at the people who get REAP. They're not the Jewish landowners like me. They're all from minority neighborhoods. That... Look at the liens. South San Pedro, South La Brea, East 105th Street, East 56th Street, South Bronson. These... What we have here is politically correct racism. If you are a black or Hispanic landowner, they will go after you. If you're white and Jewish like I am, and like the mayor is Jewish, don't worry, you can exploit black and Hispanic people as your tenants as much as you want. West Cordova Street, assessor ID number 5057, South San Pedro Street, these are all 100% racist liens. These are... We've checked on these, and remember, my white doesn't come off. Does their black come off?
No applause. Mr. City Attorney or Clerk, for clarification, this item is about removing, or am I incorrect? Mr. Clerk, what is this item about?
You are correct, sir. It's about removing properties from reprocessing.
Thank you. I thought so, but I wasn't sure. Why don't we vote on this item? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to general public comment.
Okay, if you could set the clock. Chuck Mathia or Matheny? Charlie Snoder? Please come forward. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Nizam Usani. I'm the Controller of JB Wholesale Roofing and Building Supplies. After a stagnant five years in the roofing industry due to the lack of the rain, we finally did see an upturn recently. Unfortunately, all this came to a screeching halt after ordinance 183149 was beginning to be enforced during the past several weeks. None of the 400 licensed roofers in the city of Los Angeles were notified regarding this law. The fact that the greater savings the city Los Angeles homeowners can be achieved by unenforced Title 24 insulation codes, as admitted in the UCLA study, will save homeowners more money. This measure also infringes on the rights of people to install the color shingle of their choice on their roof. Despite what it says on the LA City website, you cannot put any color shingle you want on your roof. Are the City Council members prepared to tell your neighbors that you cannot install any color on your roof besides white, because that is what's happening right now? And we're seeing people not pulling permits when they're changing their roof.
Thank you, sir. If I could add, the next speaker? Is it Chuck?
Yeah, I'm here to talk about ordinance 183149. I'm a roofing contractor that is asking for some time before this goes into effect fully, or some leniency. We've had no time. We found out about this law this week. I've ordered this shingle before. It took three weeks to come in from San Francisco. I've already lost my next two contracts because of this ordinance. Most of us contractors have fought tooth and nail to stay in business through the recession, through the drought, and this is a job killer. I'm an employer, and this takes food off the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Labange, are you going to chat? Are you going to chat with them at the side?
The microphone, but if you want me to.
Yeah. You guys can begin a conversation, Chuck, with Mr. Labange over, I think he has a red tie. He's to my right. Yes, sir. Chuck, Mr. Snoder?
Thank you very much. This is also regarding ordinance 183149, and it has to do with what I hold very close to my heart as a citizen of the United States, and that's freedom of choice. I've been asked to speak by roofing material suppliers, contractors, and homeowners regarding the synopsis of a heat island effect cool roofs. It's our understanding that long-term reflectance performance of a cool roof, as written by David Ross and William Miller, the nationally-recognized Oak Ridge Laboratory, states that a cool roof can be cooler if it has longevity of the roofing materials. It makes sense theoretically, but there's lacks of data to confirm or deny this. Secondly, the premise that a cool roof results in less atmospheric heat load, thereby reducing the ambient temperature around buildings, hence less heat island effect is correct. Of course, that's all concurrent if the roofing system itself can maintain its system for the life of the roof. Research has shown that there isn't a cool roof shingle today that would qualify in CRRC requirements.
Okay. Charlie, you may want to go over here with Mr. and have a conversation with these guys, Mr. Labange. I do have Andy, I think it's Knightley. And Andy, when you finish, you may want to go and be part of this conversation as well.
Absolutely, thank you. My name is Andy Knightley. I'm here... I work for CertainTeed Roofing Products. We're a manufacturer of asphalt shingles. We have a manufacturing facility located in Wilmington, California. I'm here to speak in opposition of ordinance 183149 that started being enforced January 1st of 2015. I'm here today to express the magnitude and hardship that this ordinance 183149 imposes on the roofing industry as a whole, which includes the roofers, the distributors, and the manufacturers located in the city boundaries, but most importantly, the residents of Los Angeles. Although we, the shingle manufacturers, have a few options available that meet the strict requirements, it only makes up less than 5% of the total product and color offerings that's provided to the residents of Los Angeles. Not only is the color selection and design limited, it also is very expensive compared to the standard offerings. In terms of dollars, it could cost an average homeowner $2,000 to $4,000 more on an average re-roof. Also, the vast majority of the higher-end homes are now extremely impact limited to your choice and selection.
Thank you. No applause. No applause. Mr. Previn, followed by Mr. Walsh.
Good morning, Council President and City Council. If I could get two minutes, since I did not speak on any of the lien items. Everybody got multiple two-minute sections. Would that be appropriate, or no?
No, you have to speak on your...
60 seconds only in public comment?
That's what you get, yes.
That is a great disappointment. Okay, I'll do my best, sir. I'd like to thank District 5 and Mr. Coretz's team for looking into 907 Shenandoah Investment LLC, which is on Tuesday's agenda, and is an astonishing $150,000 REAP... Investment LLC, which is on Tuesday's agenda, and is an astonishing $150,000 refund that was sitting, it's just, it makes absolutely no sense, we're going to get to the bottom of it. I would like to thank Mr. Krikorian, but he's not here today, I know Monday is a holiday, but he did not look into forty-two thirty, or at least respond, forty-two thirty Coldwater Canyon, sir, which is a city property, surplus property, that was given away at terms that require careful study. And, sir, the Ethics Commission, where I filed a complaint about this reduced size of individuals in the public comment period, has taken a hiatus and are not going to have their meeting on Tuesday, the seventeenth, which is really sad. They wrote that...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh, you're disrupting the meeting, Mr. Previn, your time is up. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, No on Charter Amendments One and Two. Take a look at your voter information, thirty-eight pages on Charter One and Two. No one says who wrote it. In fact, the mayor says now that he is on either side, that he's neutral. He wrote the damn thing. Why? Because this, read in the LA Weekly, will tell you that this extends the term of every single City Councilman, the mayor, the city attorney, by one and a half years unelected. We will take you to court on this. I'm telling you right now, the mayor is behind this. We now have, Ms. Martinez said she was against this one and two at her debate. We're finding more and more people, Gloria Molina, who was endorsed by the LA Times, says she's against it. The tide has turned. One and two are dirty tricks so that you stay in election.
Thank you, thank you very much. Jose Martinez, Mr. Herman? Please come forward, Mr. Okala, no, Mr. Spindler, I'm sorry.
As many of you may know that, who is covered by Title Two of the ADA? Well, the city of Los Angeles isn't aware who is. Public entities include any state or local government, any of its departments, agencies, or other instrumentapalities. Mr. Herb Westen, since you violated my rights, our rights under the Brown Act, it's not just one typical issue, but many, because you refuse to allow persons with disability to participate in a service and program and deny the activity by exclusion when you kicked me out of a public meeting on Wednesday, dumbass. So to conclude in further words, vote no on Amendment One, vote no on Amendment Two. The debate with Ms. Martinez was eh, vote and don't vote for Jose Weezer, and Mr. Krikorian is a sore loser. Take my opinion, do not vote for him and march for the elections, right, Mr. Labange?
Thank you, thank you. Your time is up, Mr. Spindler, and then a...
Before you do, Mr. President, I have a report from our public speakers, that we're getting the legislative analysts to work on that. Mr. City Attorney?
Okay, Mr. Labange.
Hold on. And also, we want to salute our guest who were here earlier, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Spindler?
Let's give a hand again to retiring Councilman Tom Labange, who is going to stop that roofing ordinance. I really appreciate that. A lot of businesses were going to be really hurt by this, it took effect January first. KABC Doug McIntyre in the Morning reported this story. The LA Times, they hit it. All the other campaign donors hit it. Even the guy that died at the Daily News, he couldn't report it. You can't get a roof on the city, in the city of Los Angeles, on your house without paying another $4,000 plus for the damn thing. And you can't select the color of your roof. What the hell is this all about? Start paying attention to people's needs. Stop overriding everybody's rights. Leave people alone and let them be free. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Okala, followed by, is it Mr. Ovio Shemes?
Power to the people. I'd like to become a gynecologist so I can see what's going on down under. And right here, in this horseshoe that is full of horse shit, and mostly is full of bullshit, because you keep making laws and having to retract yourselves because you don't know what the hell you're doing. Why don't you go study the people first? Why don't you go ride a bicycle around the city? Why don't you go see how the people really live around the city? And quit making laws that only apply to extremely rich people? You idiots, most of us are poor. Ninety-nine percent of the people are poor, and they're the ones that support your bullshit. The rich people do not even pay their taxes because they know how to get away from that, you assholes.
Thank you, thank you. So Mrs. Shemes, no applause. Ovio? Okay, that concludes general public comment. That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, those, they are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Any announcements? Mr. Ofero?
Thank you, colleagues. This afternoon at four o'clock at the Hollyhock House, we are rededicating the amazing multimillion-dollar restoration and renovation of this Frank Lloyd Wright masterpiece at Barnesall Art Park, and it's open to the public. Furthermore, it's going to be open to the public all night long until tomorrow morning, so we want to accommodate as many visitors as possible. So I invite everyone to attend the grand rededication with Mayor Garcetti, myself, and other dignitaries, Hollyhock House, Hollywood, Barnesall Art Park, 4:00 PM this afternoon.
Thank you for that announcement. Mr. Ofero, Mr. Buscayino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Monday, President's Day, everyone's welcome to join me, Senator Hall, Assemblymember Pat O'Donnell, at the seventy-second birthday of the USS Iowa, this Monday at 9:30, at Downhill South Harbor in San Pedro, again, celebrating USS Iowa's seventy-second birthday this Monday. Everyone's welcome, please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements, members, other announcements? If we could all rise for adjourning motions, if we could all rise in the chamber for adjourning motions. I'm going to first look to my left, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn today in memory of the father-in-law of my deputy, Mark Antonio Grant. John Watson Tennant was born in 1933 and passed away on January 25th after a very tough seven-month battle with cancer. John was raised in Glasgow, Scotland, and came to the US in 1960, settling in Santa Monica after a brief layover in Toronto, Canada. He and his wife Patricia came to America with their two older children, John and Michelle. Several years later, the family was completed with the addition of their two daughters, Linda and Eileen, who is almost sort of a surrogate field deputy in our office and is a wonderful, wonderful woman. John built a construction business, he was building homes for clients that ranged from David Geffen to Herb Alpert to Mel Brooks to Gene Simmons. Though he had no knowledge of baseball, he wanted to make sure his sons were fully part of the American experience, so when they decided to sign up for the local Little League, he volunteered to coach, serving in the dugout of the Santa Monica Pony League for several seasons. He was also a member of the Santa Monica Kiwanis, as well as a longtime member of the Riviera Country Club. But he said that his most prized membership was when he and his beloved wife Patricia became US citizens. Mark on my staff is somewhat known for his purple prose, and wrote the following and asked me to read this. "A good and decent man, John Watson Tennant, was never, was a common man blessed with uncommon gifts. He never encountered a stranger, rather, he always met a new person to share the joy of living with. He was by no means a saint and was open and honest about his shortcomings. The impact he had on others can be reflected in the closing scene of the movie Brian's Song, where the narrator says, quote, 'He left behind a great many friends who miss him and who think of him often, but when they think of him, it's not how he died that they remember, but rather how he lived, how he did live.' And John Watson Tennant lived every moment of his life to the fullest." Mark and Eileen note that John was preceded in death by his son Michael and his wife of 59 years, Patricia. He's survived by his son John Tennant, his daughters Linda Tennant and Eileen Tennant Grant, and his son-in-law, Mark Antonio Grant of my staff. He was laid to rest at Holy Cross Cemetery on Thursday, the 29th, at a graveside service attended just by the immediate family. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. I'm still looking to my left. Now, on the right, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise to adjourn in memory of a longtime District Nine resident, Mrs. Thelma Batrice Patterson Morris. Born February 17th, 1919, Thelma Morris originally from Texas, moved to the Ninth District in 1945. In 1954, Thelma met what was to become the love of her life, Herbert Morris, and they were united in matrimony, holy matrimony, in 1956. Thelma was enthusiastically involved in many aspects of Ward AMI Church, having served as a member of the Steward Board and Treasurer of the Trustee Board. She was also President of the Usher Board, parliamentarian of the Lay Organization, President of the February Birth Month Club, and Chairperson of the Clio Be Love Unit of the Jordan Women's Missionary Society. Thelma was just as active in the community as she was in the church. She was a teacher at 66th Street Elementary School, a member of the National Council of Negro Women and Church Women United. She also served as Vice President and President of the Church Women United Organization. Thelma was also a member of the Eastern Star and a member of the Alpha Chi Omega Sorority and a Chi Delta Row chapter in Los Angeles. She received many awards and accolades, including recipient of the Valiant Woman Award of the Church Women United, the highest obtainable award in the organization. She also received the Dedicated Women's Award. Thelma also was recognized and received Community Service Awards from the State's Legislative Rules Committee. Thelma Batrice Morris lives to cherish, leaves to cherish her memory of four grandchildren, Willie Douglas Richardson III, Azalea B. Comer, Cynthia L. Roberts, and Leonard D. Richardson. Six great-grandchildren, Benjamin Richardson, Willie D. Richardson III, Ciara Gardner, Jerome Riley, Jesse Comer, Isaiah Roberts, and three great-great-grandchildren, Benjamin Richardson Jr., Tiara McLurin-Kai Richardson, Gottson James Powell Jr., and a host of other relatives and friends. May she rest in peace.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you, members. Bob Simon, a tremendous reporter for Correspondent, for sixty minutes, forty-seven years with CBS News, twenty-seven Emmys, covered from 130 different countries, tragically in a car accident in Manhattan, was much loved by the people in his industry, was known as a reporter, reporter's reporter. I ask for adjourned in his memory of Bob Simon.
Okay, anymore on my right side? Let me again check with the left. Members, this meeting... Mr. Labange?
I mentioned that Stan Chambers just passed away. And Stan Chambers is one of the greatest reporters ever to be in our city. His family, he grew up, had a big family on Van Ness Avenue in the Windsor Square District, and he was there when television started. I remember being with him at the Pan Pacific Fire in the 90s, and the first story that he covered for KTLA was that ice skating show at the Pan Pacific Auditorium. I think we will, on Tuesday, adjourn in a higher note to his memory, but with that news, Mr. Parks, it's sad news, but there's no one more special to Los Angeles as a news reporter of all areas than Stan Chambers of KTLA and his family, his wonderful family.
Echo that. Okay, members, this meeting is adjourned, have a good weekend.